I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd like to begin our meeting with the pledge of stability. We will be respectful of one another even if we disagree. We will direct all comments to the issues. We will avoid personal attacks. To start out with, item number one, we've got a public hearing on ordinance number 2025-09. Let me get to that. Sorry, I should have had it up here, but there you go. Item number one, ordinance number 2025-09, and ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Halyford, a municipal corporation concerning the ad valorem tax millage rate for the 2025-2026 year for the Town of Halyford advising the Nassau County Property Appraiser of the rollback rate and of the final adopted millage rate providing an effective date. Do we have any public input on this? If you'll state your name and address. You just turned it off.
About that. My name is Harry Godwin. I live at 37125 Southern Glen Way. Right down the street. I'm confused about a lot of this stuff. Y'all want to raise the proposed taxes from what way I can understand according to this is you're going down, I mean, you're going up point two-five mill on everybody's taxes. Is this correct according to the statement?
If.
That's correct. Okay. Everybody on this taxing authority except for Hilliard is going down or staying the same as the 24. I don't understand why we need to raise $250 per hundred thousand of people's taxes, which is what a point-two-five millage rate is. $250 per hundred thousand. Now, I don't know what the tax base is here in Hilliard, but I understand there's about 3,201 properties that are taxed in Hilliard, of which 151 are for sale. Is it because we're charging too much tax? We're the second highest taxing authority in Nassau County, only beat out by Amelia Island. I don't think that's what people want to move here for is higher taxes. They want to leave higher taxes to come to Hilliard. It works out if everybody's property taxes are around 100,000. I know some are much higher. The property, the value that they're paying on, some are much higher, some are lower. But it works out to $800,000 a year more tax revenue for the town of Hilliard. Do we need that? I know everybody wants to raise, and I can understand that. I wanted one when I was working, but that's still a lot of money. I yield to anybody else, I guess, that wants to. I've said all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public input?
Deborah Mayo, 36151 Pine Street, Hilliard, Florida. I watched Ron DeSantis give a speech. He said everybody should be rolling their taxes back pre-2020. You're not doing that. You're gonna have a big eye on you. Just keep that in mind. When this comes up, you're all gonna be responsible. You probably should really think about that. And as far as the school goes, nothing of this is about the children. It's all about the bonds and the fraud. And if you're all complicit, then you all get charged. You have a nice day.
Thank you. Kevin, do we have any batteries back there? Because I think that microphones are... Do we have any other microphones that we can replace it with?
I could actually hear.
town for two years now. One thing that we had noticed is that I looked on Realtor.com
Well, it's still running, but it's blinking, so it's fixing to go loud.
today, and it says there's 151 properties for sale here in Hilliard. And when you add
And it's for the home crowd.
in the town homes slash single-family homes at what's going to be called Holland Walk on Pine Street, that says 28 lots or units for that 10 acres. And then the subdivision
I'm sorry. Give us just a minute.
that's going in at Henry Smith Road and Old Dixie Highway, that allows for 350 homes, which would be a total of 529 homes for sale. And so Hilliard has to have a draw to it. And when we moved here, we were so happy to move here because our granddaughter, our daughter and grandchildren lived here. We were blessed to be able to live a block away from her. Unfortunately, though, if you go up on taxes, she's a single mom, she's got children. Her mortgage is gonna go up, and she has said she's gonna have to sell. She can't afford her mortgage to go up. So I hope that y'all reconsider because we're here, because our daughter and grandchildren are here. That's what's holding us here. And I'm sure that she's not the only one. If you go up on taxes, people's mortgage is gonna go up. And, you know, times are kind of hard, even though things are supposed to be getting better. It really hasn't hit here so much yet. So I just wanted to bring that up. So please, y'all don't go up on the taxes. You know, let those of us that are here that love it be able to stay. So thank you, guys.
All right. Do we need other input? Any other public comment?
Hello. My name is Sally Singleton. I live at 2940 Jane Lane, Hilliard, Florida. Excuse me. And I really just have a few questions. Okay?
I'm sorry. Your address again is not a city limits address. I think, yeah.
Oh, is this only for town?
Yes.
Well, then who handles the county?
You can speak. You can speak.
Our taxes are on the town. The counties is where your properties live at.
Mayor, 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 I don't know if it's just me or Councilman Hunter's having the same problem, but we're not picking up a lot of what's being said right now.
Yes, same public here.
At the podium or us?
I'm now getting you. I can now hear you.
At the podium, we weren't hearing.
I was asking her to repeat it because it's a county address. You can speak. It's just I needed your address.
Okay, it's 2940. It's Jane Lane.
And your name again?
Sally Singleton.
Thank you, Sally.
So then, see, I don't quite understand. The county, like the rural area where I live, is different than the town. The millage is different from the town?
We have a Town of Hilliard millage rate, just like Fernandina and Callahan does. The county has a municipal service fund millage rate in addition to all the taxes that we all share alike, which is county, school board, St. John's, FINE. So for your taxes on your bill, the county commission is who sets your bill and rate.
And where would I find them?
They're at Nassau Place over by, across from Floral Park on 200 in that building.
Any idea when they're due?
It's on your bill that you receive.
April 10th, November 11th.
Okay, thank you. That's good. But just as an aside, who does decide whether taxes go up or taxes go down? I mean, are you folks voting on this sort of thing?
We are for the Town of Hilliard.
For the Town of Hilliard?
Just like our county and county for municipal incorporated municipalities. But the county does the county, the school board does the school board, and everybody has the county and the school board.
Okay. Well, thank you.
All right. Any other public comment?
Motion closed.
Can I have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor and opposed? All right. Now, this is the second final reading of...
This is the first.
It's the first reading.
Yeah, this is the first reading. I'm sorry.
And to set.
This is the first reading, and it's set. A public hearing and final reading on Friday, September 19th. So do we have a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-09?
All motion with comments.
And I have to jump in at some point before you vote.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. So, Mr. Godwin, I took the time and I pulled up on Realtor.com what you said had 150 homes. If you actually go to the map and pull it up for Hilliard property, there's only 47 homes on that spot. And the reason that we're really here right now is the county has, the way that they've done our gas tax over the past few years, they apparently haven't been calculating Callahan's properly. This year, we've lost $100,000 coming in from the gas tax. So we started this budget year $100,000 less than what we had last year. And I took time while you were speaking. I pulled up my property map and my property tax code, just like we have with you. The county has a rate of 6.8822, and we would only be at a three-point, I'm sorry, there's a go to a 6.7457. Ours would only be at a 3.5. So on my property, which I pulled up, I would see a net change of $37.13 over the course of 12 months.
A point-two-five change works out to $250 per hundred thousand.
If you look at your, it'll show you, if you look at your property taxes in 2024, it'll show you what you unpaid, and then you subtract that from the proposed, and it will show you the difference.
Only the Hilliard portion is the only thing we're in control of. We're not in control of your whole.
Right, right. I understand.
Right. So like where the school board is actually at 6.248, they're doubling what we are. The county's at double what we are.
Yeah, I understand. The county's going down. We're getting on a less...
Right. And like I said, we've already started this year $100,000 in the hole. So, I mean, it's not like, we have to start somewhere.
We spent about 20 years rolling back our millage rate every year that the county was increasing theirs. And we thought we were doing a great thing by doing that. And what we did was we got way behind the eight ball on what we were actually collecting in taxes. So that's what we're trying to do, is make up for the deficit that we created as this council by rolling back the millage rate and priding ourselves on having the lowest millage in the state of Florida, per capita town, our town did. But what that did was it created a problem where now we're not able to keep up, you know, with our water, with our sewer, with our streets that we have to maintain. And in order to do that, we have to collect that money from somewhere. So that's our only pot and revenues. And where we used to could get grants because we were a ready community, because we were a poorer community, with everything that's happened and all the new people that have moved in and the prices of housing keeps going up, that's taking us away from being a ready community. And we're not getting grants like we used to. That's how we used to survive on if we needed our roads paved or if we needed big sewer rehab. And we're not able to get that anymore because now our population per capita is, you know, the salaries are just, we're not where we used to be. So we're not, we're not a ready community where we can get grants anymore like we used to be. So now we have to, we have to fund that through taxing, and that's, that's our only avenue. So, and like Councilman Wallace said, we get so much on the one cent gas tax from the, from the county that we've always got. And this year, they recalculated that for some reason, and the only people that changed that went down in that was the Town of Hilliard. And we've lost $100,000. And that went to Callahan this past year because somebody had been making a mistake, is what they said. So needless to say, that money's got to come from somewhere. So we're getting a very small portion in that point-two-five, but we can't roll back. If we do, we're gonna go bankrupt, and we can't go bankrupt. So we have to look out for everybody here. And we have to, you know, that's, we've been on a shoestring budget, and, you know, we still have to make repairs. And in order to do that, we've been stealing from the general, I say stealing, we've been taking money out of the general fund to pay for water and sewer and different things like that. That's something that can't keep happening because our general fund keeps dwindling down. So in order to keep that general fund where it needs to be, not only that, water, when we go to borrow money for water, we have to, we borrow money from rural water. They get to decide if we're doing a good job in what our rate structure is, and that's coming up too. So, you know, just to go ahead and put that out there, we're having to look at our water and sewer rates because in order to borrow money from rural water, rural water says, well, if y'all aren't doing your part, we're not gonna give you any money. So you're not charging enough to your customers for their water and sewer. You're gonna have to get money from them before you try to come get money from us. So, you know, there's a, there's a whole round robin of things that's gotta happen. And it, I can promise you, we're not raising taxes because we want to, because everybody up here is gonna get a tax bill just like you're getting with that increase. And we don't make big salaries to pay that either, you know. So we're fighting that just like everybody else is. And we don't like it, and we've spent a lot of years not doing it, but we're having to, you know, bite the bullet and do that now. Just so, just so everybody knows. I mean, that's a, it's been a hard pill to swallow to do that. And we've tried our best not to have to do it, but we've come to the point that we have to do.
Yeah, that was one of the biggest things this year. Whenever we applied for an appropriations fund through the governor, which he canned all of them, the number one thing that that lending agency hit us on was our rates. They said your rates are too low, and they can use that as a reason to not bonus money.
And they have.
And they just did this past year.
They did not.
They shot us down.
Does that mean that you're bankrupt?
No, we're not bankrupt. We're trying to keep from going bankrupt, is what we're trying to do. We're far from bankrupt.
Yeah, we're far from bankrupt.
But we don't want to go bankrupt either. Hence the tax...
But every one of us up here is trying very hard to get this thing worked out. Because, like he said, we pay the same taxes y'all do. I mean, I don't want to see no taxes go up. And we took pride in doing the rollback. They just come back and bit us too.
And I will point out, like Ms. Purvis likes to point out too, we do our best to put sidewalks in, we do our best to spray for mosquitoes. There are certain things that you do get as an advantage of living in the town, that if you live just outside the line, they don't get mosquito spraying. You go up to my parents' house in the evenings, they'll, they'll tote you away. So, I mean, there are things that your tax dollars do go to that we give back to try and make it a healthier and safer community.
Councilman Wallace, with what you're saying, in living inside the city limits, we're trying to set our millage rate this year at 3.5000. And if you live right outside in the county, since you don't pay the town's millage rate, they charge the municipal service fund rate, which is this year proposed at 2.2087 mill. So the difference between the 3.5 and the 2.2087, that difference is what's paying for all the things that he just said, the sidewalks, the street lights, the ability to have water and sewer, the mosquito spray, and the having the public library, all those different things that you don't have in the county.
Well, I've been here two years, and nobody ever comes down my street spraying mosquitoes.
I agree. If you, and I'm sorry, if you have a comment, the people at home can't hear you, so you need to be at the microphone if you're sitting in the crowd.
Actually, it's our time to talk.
But public works can vouch for the fact that they do spray.
And you live on a county road, Ms. Mayo. That's, we are trying to get sidewalks on that county road, but you do live on a county road.
I agree. And you know what, I find, how come these golf carts go up and down that county road? That's a legal system.
No, ma'am. It's not illegal for the golf carts to ride on the county roads if they're under 35 miles an hour. You're on a county road.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Top of the...
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to tie into what Lisa said. We do have paperwork to show there's a town that's all documented, what areas sprayed and what dates they are sprayed.
All right. Councilor, have you had something to add?
Yeah, just, you know, there is a statute that talks about budget hearings. I'm sorry?
No, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. There's a Florida statute that has, lays out a bunch of requirements when it comes to budget hearings. And I just, for the record, want to point something out. It says in those hearings, the first substantive issue, the first substantive issue discussed shall be the percentage increase in millage over the rollback rate necessary to fund the budget and the specific purposes for which the ad valorem tax revenues are being increased. During such discussion, the governing body shall hear comments regarding the increase and explain the reasons for the proposed increase over the rollback rate. The general public shall be allowed to speak and ask questions. So it's a little, little bit different in that, I mean, you are taking the questions, but it's not just public comment. They're allowed to ask questions, and those questions should be answered. So I just wanted to put that. So, I mean, if you have any other reasons to put on the record as to why it has to be above the rollback rate, now would be a good time.
I think it's been well explained. I mean, the books are open. Our financial statements are posted on our website. Anybody can look at them. They can call here and request to come in and look at them or purchase a copy. But the best way is just to look on our website. That is where all of our financial statements are located.
All right. Well, we have a motion in a second.
One last thing. And just so you know, this is only the first hearing. Our second hearing for this, when we will actually decide on what that number is going to be. That number you see now, we had to set that back beginning of August, that that's the highest we are allowed to raise your taxes. We have to give you notice. We can come in below it, but whatever we do, we cannot come in above that number that's printed on your paper right now. And then our second and final hearing will be on the 19th at 6 o'clock or at 7, Ms. Purvis?
Well, the Friday. We can set it. We haven't set it yet. We'll set it tomorrow at 6 or 7, whichever you'd like it to be. We've chose 6 sometimes and 7.
I would rather do 6 o'clock because that's...
Friday night.
Well, that's the whole time.
So you want to do...
Okay. Whatever we said.
So this will be heard again on this floor.
Yep. All right. We got a motion in a second. Any other comment? Dallas, do you have anything to?
No, sir. Nothing to add there.
All right. All those in favor and opposed? All right. Item number two, ordinance number the budget fiscal year 2025-2026, and ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Hilliard, Florida, a municipal corporation estimating income appropriating funds and adopting a budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year for the Town of Hilliard, providing an effective date. Do we have any public input?
Motion closed.
All those in favor and opposed? All right. Now, we need adoption on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-10.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-10 on first reading of the public hearing on Friday, September 19th at 6 o'clock.
All those in favor and opposed? All right. Next item, item number three, additions or deletions to the agenda. Order. All right. Same number. We'll go on to item number four, Town Council approval of the monthly retainer increase to Mr. James A. Butch Williams agreement with the Town of Hilliard for fire safety inspection services. Ms. Purvis?
I tried to find when Butch originally contracted with the town. I do know it's the late 90s. I'm not sure what year exactly. I should have asked him. But this is the first time that he's asked for a retainer increase since he was originally hired, and he is asking for that now. And it's going from $300 per month to $500 per month. And, sorry.
We didn't have a comment?
I was just gonna say that he maintains all of his certifications and pays for all his classes. That's something he does on his own because he provides services throughout the county. He's a retired fireman and his support.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor and opposed? Item number five, Town Council approval of the Public Works Director's recommendation to fill the vacant public works technician heavy equipment operator position.
This employee has already got to start with this under emergency hire. Doing great. Have no complaints so far.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor and opposed? Item number six, Town Council approval of the Public Works Director's recommendation to fill the vacant public works technician heavy equipment operator position. This is the second position.
Yes. They were both hired the same way, and they, I've already put both of them on ditches. They just dig, and they look good to me, in my opinion. And I'd say they both seem to fit in good with our crew so far. They passed all their checks, everything. They're good to go.
Motion to approve. All those in favor and opposed? All right. Now, item number seven, Town Council approval of the Public Works Director's recommendation to fill the vacant public works technician position. This is not a heavy equipment operator.
No, this is an entry level position. When this guy interviewed, he has a lot of experience in water meters. He works for a water plant already, and he has a lot of experience in how to go replace meters, change out meters, read meters, water breaks, sewer breaks, and all that good stuff. So he interviews very well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry. You said second. Is that second?
Second. All those in favor and opposed? We're getting feedback from the home crowd.
He's having the unmuted vote. And so if you're hearing from his computer when he's unmuted, you don't have a vote, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Item number eight, Town Council approval of the Public Works Director's recommendation to fill the vacant public works technician position. This is another entry level position also. He has a lot of experience in landscaping, our basic plumbing, but he also holds a Class A CDL that he was made aware of, he has to maintain for his employment here.
Does this fill our employees?
Yes, that's all of our swaths. Yes.
Except for the newly budgeted.
Yes.
And I think that they both seem like they fit in good with our crew so far. They passed all their checks, everything, they're good to go.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now item number seven, Town Council approval of the Public Works Director's recommendation to fill the vacant public works technician position. This is about a heavy equipment operator.
No, this is an entry level position. When this guy interviewed, he has a lot of experience in water meters. He works for a, a water plant already. And he had a lot of experience in how to go replace meters, change out meters, read meters, water breaks, sewer breaks and all that good stuff. So he interviews very well.
Motion to approve. Second.
Sorry, you said second. You said second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor.
Opposed? We're getting feedback from the whole crowd.
He's having the unmuted vote. And so if you're hearing from his computer when he's unmuted, you don't have to vote.
All right, item number eight, Town Council approval of the Public Works Director's recommendation to fill the vacant public works technician position.
This is another entry level position also. He has a lot of experience in landscaping, our basic plumbing, but he also has a Class A CDO that he was made aware of, he has to maintain for his employment here.
Does this fill our employees?
Yes, that's all of our swats, yes.
Except for the newly budgeted.
Yes.
Were you on the two technicians?
Everything's completed. It didn't come through this morning. Everything, everybody passed. But yeah, everybody cleared, all employees cleared all back, everything, so. Just for the record, item number seven, Mr. Trevor, he'll be, will be starting with us Monday. Item number eight, he wants to turn in two weeks' notice after tonight's meeting to make sure the vote went through. And he'll turn in two weeks, he'll start two weeks from Monday.
All right, so do we have a motion in a second on item number eight?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number nine, Town Council to accept the resignation of Jody Wilds, lead wastewater specialist effective September 5th, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 10, Town Council to accept the resignation of Caitlin Burnett, administrative financial assistant effective September 19th, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 11, Town Council to reschedule the September 8th, 2025 budget workshop for the review and discussion of the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget.
I don't believe it as, as is, Mayor.
I, I'm sorry, I won't have my stuff ready.
That's okay, I'm just going to have it done before we actually vote on the second and final reading of the budget.
You got a motion?
Yes, I'll make that a motion.
Second.
When is the motion?
That we keep the meeting the same.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item number 12, Town Council approval of the minutes for the August 14th, 2025 workshop, August 18th, 2025 workshop and August 21st, 2025 workshop and regular meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
I've got a question on that. On the minutes for the August 21st meeting, my final comments were to add the picture on the wall out to the agenda, but it's not on the agenda. I want it on the agenda, so it's a reminder.
Because you knew if it's on the agenda, we're voting and I don't know what we'd be voting on.
Okay, well.
Discussions, made for discussion.
Okay, we can, we can discuss it at the end, but I, I do, well, that, that message is it. My comments are in the, in those meetings, in those minutes.
They are. Every meeting.
Well, no, I'm saying the point about adding it to the next agenda.
I don't know what to do for you. I mean, I don't.
You have a motion in a second.
Make somebody give you a picture.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 13, Town Council approval of Municipal Equipment Company LLC, payable through August 22nd, 2025, project paying two cents a bucket here in the amount of $1,748.05.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, no additional, no added items. We have any comments from the public? Same number, Mr. Wallace?
Yes, uh, I did send an email about Pine Street, about the trees that are hanging down and the overgrowth on the sides of the road. I sent it to the county. I believe Public Works has sent one as well. I know several citizens have. They explained that all of their side mount mudboards are broken right now or down, except for one. So to please be patient, we've been patient for some time. But they are aware that the problem is getting worse. Also, I, I appreciate you guys from Northwest Quadrant getting that project started out there. And I apologize for the citizens it's taken so long, but I've explained to a lot of them that we were trying to get good millage and get a good grader out there that we could get the job done. But hopefully you guys should finish that up this week. So only the bigger and better things out there. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Michaels?
Not a whole lot. I spoke with Gabe today, who's, he took off after lunch today. It's Dad's birthday and tomorrow he's going to take off his daughter's birthday. He's got over a hundred kids already in soccer. And I think he said about 25 to 30 in gymnastics. And he's expecting another hundred in the second, maybe it was soccer.
Yeah, I know, I talked to him the other night as well, that he's getting, he's getting ready for all the sports coming in, uh, in the next one or two. Mr. Pickett?
I would like to assure you all that did speak tonight, that we are really looking at these numbers and doing the best that we can do with what we have to do with. And we all look at the best interest of this town. I think we don't think we do. But I can tell you, we sit up here and we have our meetings and we crunch these numbers and we try to figure out how we're going to pay with what we have to pay with. So we are doing the best we can with what we've got.
Is that it?
Yep.
All right, Mr. Sims? Mr. Hunter?
No, sir, nothing to add.
All right, the only thing I have is our, um, our car show is Saturday. Starts at eight o'clock Saturday morning. Love to see everybody there. I think we'll have a couple of councilmen with a vehicle in it. So I know I'll see you up there, but come out, have a good day and spend with everybody. That's really all I have. Mr. Hobbs? Ms. Purvis?
Um, yes. Sorry. Excuse me. I have several things that got clipped behind something somewhere. Um, first, because we didn't speak about it that much, because we brushed over it so quick, keeping the workshop on the eighth, do we, did we want to not set one when I can provide this information? And I apologize, we've had these meetings all the way up until the first week of October before. I didn't know that we needed to do it before the budget was adopted because those figures in the budget don't need anything approved or a salary. So do we want to have an ongoing show that I can provide that information? Because I'm the one who has the most employees for reviews.
Well, I don't, I don't think we need to set another one because we've got a workshop next Thursday. So we can add it on to that one.
I spent five hours on the phone today with Florida Water. I mean, that's what my, I spent last Friday, the whole day where I'm consumed on these water and sewer and all the other things that have to be done. And so I have not had time to finish them. And I typically don't do them until before the end of September anyway.
All right, well, let me ask Mr. Wallace, since he made the, the motion, would you amend your motion to have it, move it to have it part of Thursday? Are you going to keep it?
I'm a whole motion.
Okay. All right. Is that it?
So if I don't have recommendations, does that mean that nothing happens for my department?
We can still discuss what it's going to look like. I mean, that's the point of the workshop. Nothing's concrete that we're going to do anything in that workshop.
Well, I know that, but you want to have it before we vote.
Yeah, because I mean, I think it's, I think it's right that we know what our numbers are going to look like. Like Council President, I'm sorry, like Mayor Beasley said, we can add it to the, that Thursday night.
I kind of know when we're doing new things, at this week, at these meetings after the adoption several years. And so I, anyway.
Well, this, this workshop has been set for over a few weeks. Yeah, last meeting.
What do you want me to do? Make me two of me so I can do double the work? I mean, I don't know what to tell you. I'm just telling you, I'm doing everything I possibly can.
All right, was that it? Is that all you have?
No, that's not all. I spent, what I just said, several hours today on the Florida Water. I'm going to discussing what our water and sewer rates will look like. The auditors, I'm reaching out to them tomorrow because I need some answers about our unrestricted ballots. I was able to find for our reserves by us paying off the bond. I'll be able to get 93,000 reduced off of our reserve that can go into revenues for that department to help it. Although that will not be enough, it will help. And so the rate study is September 11th workshop. That's when I have Florida Water will come and present the rate study. She'll be here. Um, September 3rd, yesterday, the advertisement went out for the bid for our air parks box hangar. It's 100% grant funded. We'll have a pre-bid meeting on the 17th at 10:00 a.m. Bid opening October 8th at 2:00. And we'll award November 6th at the 7:00 p.m. Town Council meeting. On September 4th, tomorrow, Mr. Councilman Michaels let me know that he is helping me with a sign for the Mickelson property for sale.
For sale today?
Excuse me, he let me know today, but tomorrow he's getting it, sorry. And that it will be land only for marketing of that property. September 10th is when the advertisement will go out for the request for qualifications for the water treatment plant, waste water treatment plant operator. And then they'll be due back October 2nd at 4:00 p.m. And hopefully we'll be able to review those at our October 9th monthly workshop. September 16th will be the Greenbrier Groundbreaking. That's a project that's been in the works since about 1998. And that's going to be at 11:30 a.m. That's a Tuesday and they've invited everyone to attend. They're going to have a ceremonial shovel.
Did you say September 16th?
Yes, sir, at 11:30 a.m. On September the 18th, we'll honor our mayor for his 25 years of service. Florida League of Cities will be coming and presenting like they did for Council President Sims two years ago. And when John reached his 20 years, it was during COVID. So they weren't able to make a formal presentation. And when they were here, they seen where he'd be 25 this year and they wanted to come and do that. Because normally they just do it at one time. So we will be having a gathering, so please invite your family. And Christian has also said that he is going to definitely be in attendance for that meeting. Um, September 23rd is Nassau delegation. The speaker requests cards are due by close of business that day. October 1st is going to be the Nassau delegation at the Board of County Commissioners meeting room from 1:00 to 3:00 with Senator Yarborough and House Representative Dean Black. January 22nd of '26 is Rural County Days in Tallahassee. And January 22nd, it's 21st and 22nd, but we only go for the day. And so on the 22nd, I'll be getting with Sherri Mitchell, the Economic Development Board Director, and talking with her in regards to what all we can do. I don't know how many of you all are aware, but what Councilman Sims had made a comment earlier tonight about us being a ready community and how we're not anymore. What it is, is Nassau County is no longer a ready community. A lot of that's because of the east side of the island is so much richer than the west side of the island. And it's causing the west side to miss out on a lot of opportunities because it's brought us out of that economic deficiency on, because they look at the county as a whole. And so she has been working really hard to try to get that changed where we're looked at separately because there's such an economic graph, demographics difference between the east and the west side. So hopefully she'll be able to make some good progress. I know we give her a letter of recommendation on that. And if so, then maybe we can start back being able to get some sort of funding.
Is that all you have? I think there's only one, one or two other counties in the state that are partially rural and partially not. And that's what they were trying to make us to where we would fall into that category.
Because we're missing out on that opportunity now because of the demographics.
Before I get to you, Counselor, I did have a couple of things. I know at our, I think it was our last meeting, or it may have been the first meeting in August, we had talked about the essays for the children. And I know Alicia had sent out an email or text message, or I know I got one, about writing a letter if you were back in elementary school. I, I want to challenge each of y'all to do that because it'd be nice to have the, the kids see what, what we think. And then also each department, I know that she had also asked y'all to do a video. So if you, I'm sure if you get with her, she'll. Okay, but yeah, just give, I challenged each department to get with, get with her and, and do a little video for the, the fourth graders.
Are you going to write a letter for each department?
No, not a letter, the video from each department and, and letters from the council.
Like with all of y'all dancing to certain tunes and stuff.
Okay. And. And the other thing I wanted to do, Ms. Mayo, I did want to address your comment about the golf carts, ordinance number 2023-15. It has in there that, and I just had it, where'd it go? Golf cart traffic shall be permitted, permitted on all roads within the town limits except for US Highway 1, County Road 108 east of US 1, Kingsbury Road, Eastwood Road, Henry Smith Road, and County, County Road 108 west of Pond Drive and Bay Road. So.
You're over this county now?
I'm sorry?
You're over this county and you're going to make their rules for them?
This is a town. It is, it's. We can't drive on those county roads. I mean, the golf carts cannot go on County Road 108 past Pond Drive. You can't go on Bay Road, can't go 108 east of US 1, can't be on Henry Smith Road, but it can be on Pine Street. Thirty, 30 miles an hour or less, Ms. Mayo, is what, is what key is on that.
I just, you're going to see, they're going to be good.
I'm sorry?
You're, you're going to get a break because we have some very dangerous neighbors that just, they're crazy. They're just out of the drug crazy. You're, you're going to get.
All right, Counselor?
No report, Mayor.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Second.